This time we call me in order, we welcome everyone to the McDowell County Commissioners Monthly Meeting. We are meeting at the Universal Manufacturing Skills Training Center. At this time, we will go ahead and ask everyone to police stand, and we also begin our meeting with prayer. We'll ask Commissioner Brown to listen to prayer, and then Commissioner Vaughn will listen to pledge.
Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all your many blessings. And Father, we ask you today, Father, that you would just lay your holy hand upon our nation, Father, and upon all who seek. Father, we ask you, God, that you would just comfort those, God, that have lost loved ones during this troublesome time. And Father, we ask you that you would be with us tonight, help us to say and do that that would be pleasing to you, first of all, God, and that that would be pleasing to our county and our community. All these things rest in thy name. Amen.
Pledge and pardon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Commissioners have had opportunity to review these. What's the question?
Whatever, ma'am.
Motion, second, discussion. All of you say aye. The opposed, last time. We have the night's agenda before us, Commissioners. Are there any additions or deletions at this time?
About revision of agenda.
Second.
Oh, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a discussion about recreation.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Further discussion? All of you say aye. The opposed, last time. Okay. Let's go to our first item on our appointment schedule. This is a COVID-19 update. We have William Keller with us, and also Karen Powell, who is the Director of the Health Department. So William and Karen, come on up. Who are going to start, lead out. We're glad to have you here, and the floor is yours.
Hey, thanks for having us tonight. I appreciate that. I appreciate your time. First, I want to say thank you for your support. We just, since this has started, we just really have felt the support of all of you and the community and everything that we've been doing. So I really wanted to say thank you before we got started tonight for that. I think if you had told me 85 days ago that I would still be standing here reporting on this to you, I probably would have laughed, but yet here we are, day 85, still every day for 85 straight days. So today, I just wanted to give you just a brief update on what we're doing, where we are. Today's numbers that we've tested in McDowell County are 2,135. We have 1,245 negative tests, 783 tests are pending, 107 of those are positive, and we have two deaths at this time. Those numbers were as of today. We did a community testing this morning, and so those numbers will go up tomorrow, just those testing numbers from this morning are in those numbers. So what we're doing continually is, right now, we have, and last week, we had community testing out and about at different locations, and so we're testing anybody that feels like they need to be, if they've had close contact with a positive, or they have symptoms, or they don't have symptoms and they're just concerned. So we're doing that, and then when we get those results back, we're very, very diligent about following up with the contacts on those positives that we're getting back. For me, that's very critical as that's what public health does. We just make sure that we follow up with those positives, get those people self-isolated in quarantine to get them out of the community so they can get well, and so, and anybody they've been in contact with. So that's really what we're doing right now. We are staying at the Health Department every day to continue that contact tracing, because when you get one positive, you can have 10 to 12 contacts behind them. So it's a lot of work to get them called, talk to, advise about what they need to do, maybe who their contacts were, and so it turns into a little bit of a snowball effect. So the partnerships that we formed in the EOC over these last 85 days are just unreal. I would have never, when we first started this, it crossed my mind, how are me and my two nurses at McDowell County Health Department going to do this by ourselves? And we haven't been by ourselves once. So William and his staff have just been so supportive, and so now we just have it sort of down to a science when we go out into the community. My nurses are able to stay back at the Health Department and do all that contact tracing and all that work, and then William and I go out with his crew and do the testing and the paperwork and just get everything. I mean, we roll out of there and it's just seamless. And that relationship has, I just can't say enough about it. I appreciate him and his whole staff and really supporting us and making sure that this is just going extremely easy for our community. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you and what we're doing. So thank you for that, and we'll just keep going until, until we're done.
Okay. Are there any questions for Karen, by Commissioners? I'll make a statement. Karen, you were ragging on William and his staff, and our board concurs with you 100% and they do a great job day in, day out. And thanks to your staff, too. We know you don't have a big staff, but your staff's working very hard, and our board appreciates the work that you and your staff are doing also.
Thanks, Karen. It's been a pleasure working with her and her staff, and I would echo, they've worked extremely hard from daylight to dark and then beyond on many days, trying to do contact tracing and all the different things that come with this pandemic. As Karen did say, today is day 85 of EOC operations. We continue to support operationally and logistically the community testing sites that Public Health is conducting. I think it's, it's a good statistic to show that we've tested probably at 4.7% of the population at this point, and as of this weekend, that was higher than some of our more populated counties that surround us. So in limited staff, we've really expanded community testing. When we dive into our numbers, let me move over to those. One of the things that we have seen is an increase in the number of children that have tested positive. If you monitor our data on McDowellian.com, the highest percentage is in the age group of 25 to 49 years of age, and that represents 42%. From 0 to 17 years of age represents 18%. Before, that was near the bottom for pediatrics. So we've seen over the last two to three weeks an increase in that age group. 50 to 64 years of age, 17%, 65 years and greater, 13%, and 18 to 24 years of age, 10%. Our deaths, both deaths have come from individuals 65 years of age and older. We also have the zip code breakdown on our website. Marion's zip code continues to have the largest percentage of positives. And then our hospitalization, 9% of the cases have required hospitalization, with 91% requiring no hospitalization. We continue our coordination with long-term care facilities. It remains one of the top goals of the EOC. We've said that we're on Week 13. That priority was there on Week 1, and it remains there on Week 13. Having the DSS support inside the EOC, constant communication with the facilities, including every day this past weekend, allows us to have real-time communication, provide that support, as well as provide the necessary personal protection equipment to keep frontline workers safe. That remains the top priority in the Logistics Division to ensure that frontline healthcare workers, including other frontline workers, for example, DSS, Adult Protective Services, Child Protective Services. We have a whole host of departments that we're supporting to ensure they have the correct personal protection equipment as we move along in this incident. That is all the information that I have for you on this update, minus the quarantine numbers today. 69 are in quarantine, 36 are out, and we have two deaths for a total of 107 positives.
William, what is the determining factor that forces hospitalization for these people?
So it would be on a case-by-case basis, depending on what type of condition. Really, when you look at someone having cardiac difficulty, there would be certain criteria for admission, and the same for COVID. Restorative distress is one of the main issues that we've seen in hospitalization.
I'm curious as to how the children from 0 to 17 are dealing with it. And when I think about it, I think about overall health before COVID, and what kind of timeframe if we've had enough time to see, are the children in that age group seeing a turnaround where they start feeling better? Is that what you want to speak to?
Sure. So right now, we're looking, a lot of the positives we have in kids are really, really young children, one year and younger. And so we don't, and they're not better yet, so we don't know yet with that. And we are finding they're getting it inside the household, right? So the older ones that we're seeing seem to turn around a little bit quicker. They're not, the hospitalizations aren't as long if they're hospitalized, you know, in the hospital at all. But the older ones tend to turn around a little bit quicker. The little ones we're watching, they're taking a little bit longer. But it's just like William said, it just kind of depends on what sort of preconditions we're looking at. I know in one instance, we had maybe 15 to 20-year-old, something like that, already had some conditions, probably a little bit longer. It just sort of depends on what they get, you know, when they have roadblocks turned around. The little ones are having a little bit harder time turning around.
Karen, can this virus or symptoms of this virus show back up later on in life?
I don't know that we know that yet. I think, you know, we don't, we're not really even at a point yet where we can do the antibody testing to see if you've had it and if, you know, if you're immune to it yet. Because what we're finding is some, you know, obviously we're finding people that are testing positive, we're waiting those 14 days, maybe longer, testing again, and they're still positive. Or they test negative and turn around and test positive again. So we're seeing some of those strands, and I don't know that we can, we can tell yet if it's something you get again later in life, or if you're immune to it yet or not. So I think we'll just have to wait and see. It's so new, and nobody, nobody, when we started this, wasn't immune to it, right? So we know it's a virus that nobody's had. Unlike the flu, you know, you've seen, you've seen those statistics in this room. If I've had the flu and you've had it, you know, then we can probably protect you from you getting it, but with COVID, nobody in here's had it. So nobody's immune to it yet, and we don't really know what that looks like, I don't think, later on in life. I think that's going to take some time to figure that out.
Is there any antibody testing? Is that where you can see if you had it, prior?
I think the only, the only place that I know right now, correct me if I'm wrong, is if you give blood, they will test for it when you donate blood. But really, those tests aren't out there right now, and the ones that are, everything I read or see in reports, but they're just not accurate. So I don't, they're not really recommending any type of antibody testing yet, like through us or the hospital, but I don't know.
The antibody testing is not accurate?
I'm sorry?
Did you say the antibody testing?
None of the tests that we've seen that we can get are, they are saying are accurate at this point.
Other comments, questions?
Which was a question, Karen, a loaded question, I guess. With quarantine that we experienced with all the, you know, stay-at-home building up immunity to it and stuff, and I know you probably, that's probably not a question if you ask those, but do you have an idea if those families were coming out into the public in that square? I mean, we've only been out for over two weeks, or was it already in the home? Because if I'm looking at it and it's staying in that home, they had it before they ever went into that home, if they weren't even in there. And now they're being tested and it's there. So is that a loaded question? I don't mean it to be, but you see where I'm coming from, because people say the longer they're quarantined and they come out, they, they don't have immunity to anything.
So, you know, I probably can answer that in several different ways. I think we're seeing all different scenarios with that. We're seeing people that were in, they're coming out, they're getting it, and then families getting it. Did they already have it, and then they came out and they were positive to get tested? I think we've had all of those scenarios at this point. So, you know, is staying in hindering that immunity? I don't know that we know yet. Yeah. Do you want to say anything for that?
No. I think folks said a positive, you can remain in that quarantine setting to prevent community transmission.
And we're trying to make sure, you know, anytime we put one person in quarantine, we quarantine the whole family. So everybody that's in quarantine in that family, nobody comes or goes. And we really try to stress that when we call the positives, to make sure that they understand it's not just the positive person that stays home. Because as we're seeing with these families becoming positive, if one leaves the house, you know, then they can, they can give it to whoever else they happen to be around. So we're always trying to make sure that we check on those families. If we're quarantining the whole family, do they need anything? You know, are they doing okay? We don't want a family to go in and not be able to get food or whatever. So we do make sure that they have what they need, but it's so critical that everybody stays home.
Do you think most of those families are complying with you?
They seem to be. They seem to be, but, but I think there's always going to be instances when that's not happening.
What ability do you have if someone tests positive and the Health Department says you're quarantined for 14 days? What is the ability that your department has if they're out here at Walmart, tested positive already, known to your agency? What can you do to somebody like that?
So for us, our next step, usually we do verbal quarantine orders. So if I call you and say you're a positive result for COVID, they need you to stay home for 14 days, quarantine you and your family. Those are just verbal quarantine orders. If we find out those are being broken, the next step we can do is issue written quarantine orders. We have those delivered by law enforcement so that they know, you know, this is, this is real, this is not, you know, just something, it's not a suggestion, in other words. This is, this is a real order that you have to stay home. If we continue to find out that that is not happening, then we rely on law enforcement to help us do that. And then that sets off another chain of events that we have to figure out if we're going to, if we're going to pursue that. We really haven't had that yet. I'm not saying that's not happening, but we haven't had to do that yet. We have issued paper orders, and typically when we do that.
I've heard none of McDowell County, but in neighboring, neighboring counties at the current.
Some of ours, or maybe a large percentage of ours, has come from other counties, hasn't it?
We have had a lot of-
People commuting back and forth.
Sure, sure. We have a lot of McDowell County residents that travel outside the county to work, and so they may have picked it up where they work or in that community, and so they test there, but when they come back, they become our member because they live here.
And as you, if you recall last week, there, in my provider, an update, we talked about the discrepancy between the DHHS number and then the actual Health Department's positive number, and that's been corrected. So DHHS is back in line with what Fayetteville's Health District is reporting. So as we said before, a positive may come to Barrett, an individual from another county may come to McDowell to be tested. We have a lot of citizens that go to other counties to seek healthcare, just like we have some out-of-county citizens come here to seek healthcare. But it's only, we're only counting McDowell County residents that discrepancy was fixed.
Yeah.
Can I review the testing sites real quick for this?
Yeah, and I was going to make one more comment, that our board appreciates the fact that, that the Health Department and our staff are going out in the community, what, five days this week, to be in different locations, and that's great. I mean, y'all are, y'all are out there to where the people are, that maybe can't come to where you're at if you're cross-staffed. So thanks for that.
Yeah, I'm really pleased at the partnerships, one, existing partnerships, and then we've forced some new partnerships, even this week. We were at St. John's AMV Church on US 70 East today. That's I work very well. Really appreciate the church working with us. Tomorrow, we're at First Spreewill Baptist Church from 11 to 1:00 p.m. That's on Ballin Avenue. We'll follow that up tomorrow afternoon. We're in Jacktown Community at Parker's Chapel Church at 4 to 6 p.m. We're back at McDowell High School on Wednesday from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. Thursday, we'll be at the Old Fort Town Hall from 9 to 12. Then Thursday afternoon, we're doing a joint venture at Mofford Cove Baptist Church, just across the county line in the Sugardale Community of Mofford Cove. And then Friday morning, we're out in the Crook Creek Community at Cherry Springs Baptist Church from 9 till 11. So, and then we've got a diatribe planned for the week. After that, we continue to make the rounds, trying to take this study to the community, to make it available. It's free. If you've been through the site, I think most people would agree. It's fast, it's simple. Hopefully, they see it as efficient, we keep it rolling, and not get folks hung up for 30, 45 minutes. So appreciate it.
I'll have to say it's not a pleasure.
We appreciate you coming by.
Okay. Thanks, William, and here again for all you and the Health Department are doing right now. You're doing a great job, and the board appreciates it. Let's go ahead and move to our next item on our appointment schedule, and this will be County Operations Update, and Mr. Williams can go ahead and start on this side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, especially due to the added item with Ms. Huskins with the recreation discussion. For the county operations, more or less, operations are operating, please determine, a modified normal. So all of the county offices are open. They're all staffed with, again, with some modifications for staffing. We've talked for many weeks now about the public-facing aspects of our operation. We have, much like the retail operations, we have Plexiglas up where there wasn't already. We have the marking tape. We have enhanced cleaning at several of our facilities. One of the biggest challenges we've had since our last regular meeting has been the reopening of court on June 1st. Well ahead of that time, our staff worked with the Sheriff's Office, with the judicial officials on preparing for that reopening. So we are, we have additional temporary staff there to help cleaning, sanitizing the courtrooms, and by all accounts, that is going as well as it can under the situation. It does create challenges and frustration sometimes amongst the public and employees and everyone else, but for the most part, people have been very understanding and cooperative with what we're dealing with there. We are looking at, as we move forward and somewhat segue into recreation discussion, again, most of our offices are somewhat normal in operating as they should be. With Ms. Huskins, she and I have had many conversations going back for several months since this really all started. What is the summer going to look like? What's the pool season going to look like? So we have the different phases that've come out. Again, going back several months, the baseball season for Babe Ruth was canceled, so that was behind us. The, the pool question has been there, and the facility question's been there. So we wanted to talk about that tonight and get some, get some direction from the board on preferences there. We have some information that has been shared with you from the Governor's Office as far as guidance and requirements for, for both. Ms. Huskins has some information, and so whatever, we're comfortable, we can lead into that and have her talk about.
Before we do that, just bring, give the board a update real quick on the EMS Capital project.
Okay. Under Old Business Team?
This is on the, this is, you go down to the appointments, I don't know.
We have, okay, on EMS Capital, talk about that. That has been sent out to the Local Government Commission. The board met Thursday to have a public hearing on the financing approval. And so that went well. The application was approved by the board on Thursday. That was text and emailed as well to LGC staff on Friday, and so the next step will be the Local Government Commission meeting on July 7th. Staff will probably participate via phone, or hopefully for approval on that date.
That was, that was on page 17, so there's a little bit of that.
Right, that, that's the first item under Old Business.
Yeah. Yeah. Chair, on page 17, let me see. All right, let's go ahead now and talk about Recreation.
So again, on the recreation item, Ms. Huskins is here. There was communication, there was a weekend on, on my staff, on new guidance that we received on Friday. I sent that out to you. A couple of weeks ago, there were requests that were made to utilize the Maple Leaf Fields and probably others, but at least Maple Leaf for tournaments, games, et cetera. So we contacted the Governor's Office for guidance since the current executive order being 141 really is not that clear on how youth sports should be interpreted. So we did receive a document this past Friday providing clarification. Again, the current executive order has a mass gathering limit of 25 people when you're in an outside venue. So County Attorney, myself, the Recreation Director, others, look at that, and that's, that's hard to pull off for any sort of outdoor youth league activity, no matter what sport it is. So we, probably about two Fridays or Thursdays ago, communicated with the Governor's staff, asking for additional clarification on that, since it seemed like clear. Received a message back, they were looking into it, will get back with us. Finally got that last Friday, and I sent that to you this past Friday. And the clarification was, for a game at a field, just talk about one for a second, each team is allowed to have 25 participants. So there's two teams, you can do the math. So there's 50 possible, which is a lot for youth participants, plus 25 spectators per field. So for one, a one-field facility, that would be pretty easy to say you would have 75 total human bodies in close proximity to that ball field. Again, no more than 25 coaches, players, et cetera, on one team, no more than 25 on Team B, and then 25 parents, grandparents, whatever, watching. That's per field.
Is that a clarification, actually? So that's 25 players per field, that's a combination of both things. What you're saying?
So 25 for Team A, 25 for Team B.
That's even more than what we thought.
Okay, let me, that's more, that's right.
When did we get that info?
Friday.
Let me stop you right there. You're smart, Adam. So this is your information to us yesterday. Essentially, each field at Maple Leaf could have 25 participants, okay?
I did get additional. What I received today was not my understanding, and so that was clarified for me today from the Governor's staff. So it is 25 and 25 per team. So that was re-clarified because it didn't seem to make a lot of sense, and so I spoke to the Governor's Office today, and he re-clarified. It's 25 and 25.
And then 25 spectators?
Yes, sir. That is from-
So spectators, does it have to change per team? So it's 25?
It's the two teams.
Per field?
That's right.
So it'd be a total of 100 people?
75.
75 per field.
Times four fields, that'd be, you'd have 400.
Oh, I thought you said 25 spectators per team.
Per field. Per field. So, again, you would have two teams, Team A, Team B, 25, 25, plus 25 spectators per field. The maximum you could have in a Maple Leaf is 300 human bodies on that campus if four games are happening.
Three?
So, if you had two games happening, you would have 150 people. Again, it would need to follow the breakdown on the guidance today, which is, again, different than what was.
So, that's even better interpretation, probably.
It is, too, man.
So, we're up another pender now.
Well, it still contradicts his executive board. And that's what gets us into decisions against us, and when you call, but I may have missed it, you sent requests, what, two, three weeks ago, and no response to that current of the governor?
I received one several days later that said we're looking into it. And that was explained to me today that there's someone at DHHS that has to look at it, there's a, probably a general counsel in the governor's office that has to look at it. And so, it can take time to get somebody's clarifying.
Because I've also seen where the players and coaches do not count as that 25, just like with our meeting, just like with our meeting, we do not count as part of the 10 within the time, correct?
Governmental operations aren't set.
So, that just totally contradicts what his executive order is, by saying you can have that many, and still having social distance six feet in the dugout wasn't a bleachers threat, correct?
I can understand, I can understand the frustration of parents and folks out there in the community that are looking for activities to do with their kids now that things are starting to open up a little bit. And they also get our rec department confused with big league camp, which is two totally separate things.
Really, it's totally separate.
And, you know, I don't know that, I assume they have, but I don't know that they have contacted the governor's office for clarification on their fields or not, you know? So, I mean, and what I'm getting at with that is, we've got to do something to better communicate with our community when it comes to these youth activities.
Steve, why don't you come out and see if you can add anything to our discussion back there? Have you been in conversation with some parties, please update?
The, what Ashley is talking about, the 25 per team, that includes planners, coaches, the umpires, and if the team has a scorekeeper. So, it's not just the 25 participants, it is all inclusive. And then 25 per field, which would be 12 watching one team and 11 watching another team. The only thing we run into with Maple Leaf is we still have to do the social distancing, and we have to, we need to, they stay closed down all commons area where individuals can form small groups. So, to me, that would be around the concession stand as well, the back stops, and then at the ends of each dugout is usually where they wrap it around.
According to CDC and Governor's Dick, when we came out with catcher behind home plate with the bat, it has to be soft toss, that balls have to be sent down between each player, is that right?
And then, I spoke with, I've talked to Donnie Settles several times between yesterday and today, and he said that they are sanitizing the balls every time a new pitcher comes in, and I believe after each inning.
I'm sorry, what the governor's order says, and the governor's order then has stated that we can have the number you give us today, so they can play ball. And that's, we, our goal is to make sure we move it forward where these kids can play ball and enjoy some semblance of the rest of their summer on the field somewhere. So, what recommendations are we giving to our board tonight concerning our plan? Is our plan going to be to go ahead and notify your area directors to what we're going to do, what we're going to do regarding our facility? We heard some information here, but what are you going to give our board tonight's recommendation? We're having people, we have people calling us now concerning, which both y'all know, about the usage of the fields, and we want to give them a, we want to sing off the same book, give them the same answer. That way, they're not, they're not any more confused than what we've been trying to deal with, questions answered.
I, I would like for, I want to see the facility opened as well. My biggest concern is making sure it is done safely and legally, and we're not going against any kind of governor orders. What I would like to see happen, since we don't have, since we canceled our Babe Ruth program, we don't have any programs going on with baseball and softball at this time. So, what people are wanting are two different categories. They're wanting to rent the fields for tournaments, and then they want to use the fields for practices. The practices are not going, with practices, they can, the parents can let the child off and stay in the car and, you know, wait for the practice to be over. The parents don't, you know, we can say they're not allowed in there. What I would like to see is two contracts written up with the guidelines from the governor's office, and anyone who wants to reserve the field for practice or rent the field for tournament needs to come through the recreation department. The last time I, I started getting phone calls and pictures sent to me on Thursday or Friday, and saying there's 75 people up at Maple Leaf. And when they said there were 75 people, my, you know, mass gathering automatically went to, I know it's not supposed to be 50, and I thought it was 25. So, at that point in time, the next day, I did ask our maintenance supervisor to go ahead and close them down until we can get something resolved, so we're not breaking any regulations.
Let me ask you a question. If we can have 25 per team for a game, and we can have 25 spectators for a game, why do the parents have to sit in the car when practice is going on?
I just said that it would be easier to...
But why would we even entertain that thought?
She speaks social distancing.
Yes, 66.
But I know, but, I mean, with, with one team up there, even on each field, if you just got one team practicing on a field, you're not going to have that many, are you?
I don't know, I was just holding 75 the other day for a practice.
One team, not including the coach, then not including one parent per kid.
And when, when do you say 25 kids on a team?
I said 15, 12, 15 kids on a baseball team.
And even that's called?
Yeah.
And then you got your parents watching. I'm just wondering why the parents, if they could go watch the game, why are they going to even think about sitting in the car?
They are typically fans of their children, right? And I think it's, if you monitor the gates, access into the facility, and now, that's going to be easier said than done, somebody, somebody's going to be there to monitor.
There also is an order that if there are two entrances, then one has to be designated as an entrance, and one has to be designated as an exit.
So, you need somebody at the entrance and somebody at the exit, to make sure, make sure somebody that come in the exit trying to make it an entrance?
And there's supposed to be time in between those games to sanitize the dugouts.
You have to have a proper amount, a proper amount of time for one team, the, one team to be out of the facility in order for the next team.
It has to be spread out, correct?
Mm-hmm. Now, as far as us running the program, we won't be running the tournaments, and we won't be running the practices. But we're going to be entrusting whoever signs the contract that they're going to follow the guidelines.
Intervention codes? On a contract, when, when the board moves forward, and we want a way to move forward and allow these kids access to those fields, Mr. Coats, as our, as Sue has said right here to us tonight, a contract, what can you put in the contract legally to help protect and make sure that guidelines that are in place right now would be followed by whoever would rent the field?
Let me, let me sort of piggyback on your question along with that to Mr. Coats. And, and to Mr. Coats, what liabilities are we unloading on ourselves when we make these moves?
Let me add a tag on the tag. Is there a, can we require them to sign a waiver form upon entering our facilities related to COVID? There you go.
Now, Donnie did say at Big League, they do require waivers for anybody coming in for practicing for games.
Okay. I'll go to Park, Steve.
Hello, folks, how are you?
Doing good, Mr. Allen.
I really think if you just post and sign these, that, you know, rules are in effect, social rules, the governor's orders, et cetera, I don't think signing a waiver is going to really be that helpful to us. I think the person who is renting the field, in charge of the games, is the one we need to get to sign an agreement that they will enforce the orders that are now in effect. So, if one, one person or group is putting on the leader of that group, or the person signs that we're responsible for, you know, enforcing the rules. And by the way, the number that we're talking about, the people working the concession stands are not counted as part of the number. So, you can have eight or 10 people working this, but again, they really ought to have their mask on, and they ought to really try to do as much cleaning as they can, but waivers, I don't think is something that's going to, and I don't really see that you've got that much liability. Nobody can tell for sure where they caught something. You know, that, that's, that's your problem with this, is indicated, you don't know whether you got it or you don't have it. You can test positive one day, and two days later, test negative, and then test, we don't know, it's just not enough we know about. But I don't think you need that.
The signage you're talking about would be just like somebody entering a building that's got a sign that says, "Subjects entered are subject to search." When you walk in, you give that up, so.
I just think just some kind of, as we said, some kind of sign that, you know, you're entering this sort of, on your, at your own risk. I don't, I don't know, that's all I'm going to say.
I do have a copy of that waiver, and typically, the way I use it to understand paperwork, it's about as good as the paper's written on it. They can still sue you regardless, it doesn't matter, you have the right to sue.
Yeah, don't mean you're going to win.
No, it doesn't mean that. But who, in that contract, they would need to be responsible for the cleaning of the mess rooms and everything else. Not, it should be the county's responsibility to furnish tissue, paper.
And those guidelines, now, the chemicals that they have to use has to be COVID-19 approved, EPA approved, and we have that, so we would probably need to ensure that they're using those chemicals and provide it for them. But we always have provided all of the toilet paper, paper towels, soap, trash bags, all of the...
As a charge, or is that free to those teams travel?
That is included in their fee, their rental fee.
How much per field?
75 per field.
$75 to charge them?
Well, now, let me throw something in there. If we're talking about teams coming from other places.
As, yeah, we were having sports going on, we have visitor travel. Okay, what about, do we have local teams that want to practice up there?
We, we have New Mano that has asked to practice, and he contacted us today, and we made sure it was, you know, open for him to practice. The other teams that I have heard of are all of the little league teams, and then there's another group, and I'm thinking it's traveling, traveling. But as far as it's little league teams, travel teams, and then our new, new man.
And I guess where I'm coming from is, if we're making care of the local folks, I don't think we don't even need anything to charge them any of them.
But that would just be like...
They just practice.
They just practice.
Yeah, your, your four fields up there heavily utilize the travel law terms.
Yeah, we don't, the practice of the red park is not to charge anybody locally to practice on fields, correct?
No, we don't charge for practicing. The only thing that I feel like with the COVID-19 is it's always been open, you know, all of our fields have always been open, first come, first served. If you do reserve it, you know, come through us, then we make, make sure that you get top priority. But I just feel it's imperative now that everything comes through us, so we'll know what is on our fields, who's there.
It should come through you.
Yeah, that's, now, that's a given, that, that should have always been even prior to COVID, the scheduled use of the fields. It needs to go, if somebody wants to schedule use of this room right now, they contact whoever at McDowell Tech, and they check the availability of rooms. So, I think that...
If it actually comes through you, it should be recognized.
Yeah, if you're bringing any Saturday and Sunday, there's teams, there's people that are pressing, because it's open, it's not closed off, we used to work at this field, because it's open to the public, it's not gated, it's not, or it's gated, but it's not locked on weekends like the school facilities, you can't get on the front.
Do you have staff that cleans that on a routine basis once practice starts, whether they're...
We don't have a staff there, we...
But do you have someone that goes there, let's say, every evening to make sure it's clean every morning?
Not in the evenings, every morning.
They clean the bathrooms if it needs cleaned?
Staff cleans.
Because I've heard a lot of comments over the years, not right now, about the bathroom up there being absolutely past.
That's them's using the field's responsibility to keep those restrictions clean. I got those calls, too, about the tissue paper, and I said, "Oh, really?" It's not really, and it was a red ball, it was not our county ball, it was travel ball. It's, it's our responsibility, you know, to furnish your tissue paper for you, and you're making money, in my opinion, you know, but I said, "My opinion."
But you can't have bathroom without it either.
Yeah.
I mean, you cannot have a facility open and not provide tissue and things that are needed.
In our contract, also, I'm sorry, before we get, our contract also states that it's $75 per field that you use. So, it's, if they only use two fields, then they're $75 a piece per day. Other two fields aren't charged, we don't charge them for the two fields that they didn't use, but yet the complex is all still shut down for them.
I think the board needs to be commenting on the contract, that way, the board can review what we're doing for travel ball. The board understands now that local people will have, with the board's blessing here, which you've got tonight, local people need to always, or anybody, contact the red department to schedule and check the availability of any field. Is that what y'all are saying tonight, too?
Yeah, I'm saying all fabs, where every, every, every situation.
I'm also going to add that we've got to do something about assuring that the facilities are clean. I don't know how to do it, it's got to be done on a basis and schedule, and somebody's got to do it, because that bathroom cleaner is more important than anybody else's, sir.
We've gotten, as Brenda said, and so, you know, because we called staff, and they, y'all had discussions about it, we can call anytime there's a, that's been used, bathrooms. And part of the contract, part, part, I'll just back it, part of... And part of the contract, part, I'll just back it, part of this board looking at are all the recreational opportunities that we offer. And the board started working on this pre-COVID, then COVID did, but looking at our facilities. Part of the plan, or part of what we're doing needs to be, these facilities, the contracts that we reviewed, as Barry said, Brenda, and whomever, that we need to have specifics in there regarding, regarding the cleaning and ever so often, but I've been told this though, that the fee is so minimal because we need to do updates to the facilities. And I get that, you know, as we, as we enhance the facilities, the fee can be with that and increase over time. But for the night though, to move this forward, because we can't talk about all that, the people who have contacted the information, they need to know that the fields will be available, they contact their staff. Ash, jump in here, I'm moving, any of you there?
Maybe a suggestion on the practice, because I think that's sort of the big desire right now, especially from Little League, it sounds like the, they have a lot of participants, especially Bayou, it's not happening this year, they need facilities to practice. And this actually, just keep in mind the bigger picture, I haven't heard that school facilities are open for use, so you, there's Maple Leaf, but there's also Old Ford and Glenwood and North Cove that more or less has the same issues as far as access for practice, but, but make it available for practice today, it sounds like, but definitely the rest of the weekend from here on out. Have something maybe very simple for whoever calls, whether it's Little League or New Man or whatever, that says, okay, here's a handout or email it or whatever, that says you got to stay under the limits, but, and there's basic requirements for sanitation, but good luck, have fun. The tournament question, I think that's a little bit different than the practices. Thought maybe we're meeting next week is to, we can turn around the contract in a week and bring back a draft next week, Ms. Huskins here, and maybe Mr. Coates, hopefully Mr. Coates is looking at it before then, to everything you said back in the spring that you had, or even before that, you had concerns about, but really focus on that and COVID, especially on the contract tournaments. Just a suggestion, let the practices start and get going and maybe delay a week on the tournaments.
That's my thought. I mean, folks are already ready, we don't need to delay two or three more weeks trying to figure out what we're going to do.
Right.
We need to move now.
High school is, I've got two teams that start practicing with restrictions.
And let me say this too, anytime a travel team or tournament has been reserved, then they are supposed to produce a million dollar liability policy. Name McDow County's additional insurer, and if they're not coming through us, then we don't have that liability policy. And that is only for travel teams and tournaments, that's not our, you know, we've never ever charged for our kids, our lead kids practicing.
Okay, looking forward to reviewing the contract next week and make sure to email the board that current contract is accepted.
One other thing, if you don't mind, Don, I spoke to Donnie again today and he is interested in renting Maple Leaf this coming weekend, and he said that he would assume 100% of the responsibility and liability for it, and they would run it strictly the way that Big League is at this point in time.
Can he produce?
We need, we need to see, we would need to see what he's done at Big League, I mean, we have the reference point, what we see on the internet.
I do have the waiver and then he did tell me some of the processes that he goes through.
Is he insured for the million dollars you're talking about?
Do what?
Is he insured for the million dollars you're talking about?
He would have to be, I'm sure that they are, but he would have to be.
It sounds like from reading the newspaper article, Mr. Crawley worked on it, just by reading that, it seems like there's a lot of good practices in place, but I haven't talked to him directly.
I know that they have, everybody has to sign the waiver, their temperature is taken before they go in, everyone. They don't let the participants go inside or the spectators go inside.
Sue, here's his, Barry just passed this to me, this is his general guidelines right here, and number two, parents will be permitted on-site in vehicles only, vehicle admission and parking will be free, says that, tents are there for players, you said the coach will be taken upon arrival, greater than 100.4 is not allowed, there has to leave.
They put tents and they have spaces that spectators are allowed to come and put a tent up, and I have the, he emailed those, sent those to me today too. The only, and I saw in those guidelines too, so no spectators are allowed, they're allowed on the outside of the fence to watch. They do allow, if someone is staying in the cabins or if it's a scout, then they are allowed priority seating and then they can be one of those 25, but not necessarily going all the way up to the 25.
Well, the information we received from the captain's office, I think it's great to verify the number, nothing's even to more of advantage of the people who want to go out there and enjoy a good ballgame, so that's good. The pool, let's talk about the pool real quick, because we've been, we've received comments, inquiries about a pool.
Okay, the swimming pool, we're looking at, we're shooting for June 19th, but just in case, I've told everybody we're looking at the opening at the end of June. I have, I've spoke with the swim team coach a couple of times, he is not interested in any meets, he's concerned about 250 people being around swim pool with the meets, so, but he is interested in trying to get some practice time in, which we could accommodate that, we do that every year. Just a few guidelines that they would have to do for practices, one swimmer per lane, but, so we can accommodate the swim team in continuing with their practicing. Then we, if we hold, there are allowed, with the square footage, there are allowed 50 people allowed in the water at any, any given time, a lot more allowed on the deck, regulating how many go in and out, water's going to be hard, especially when lifeguards are trying to save lives, so recommend only 50 people in. We are going to have to have a gatekeeper at the entrance and we're going to have to have a second entrance, since there is the, since we do have that avenue that we can do, have somebody get the second gate, we're going to have to have two lifeguards, we always have that, but we're going to have to have additional person as well at the bathrooms because we only have one sink, so only one person allowed in the bathroom at a time, and then with standing water on the floor, it has to be cleaned more often, so every time somebody goes in and comes out, then we'll have to go in and sanitize and clean.
Sue, this all goes back to the question of the bathrooms and the problems that we're having then, why can, would it not be possible that, well, you could do a study on it and see if it would be feasible to put a staff member there during, you know, these events to take care of the bathrooms and see that they are functional throughout the whole thing and pass that charge on to the renters or, you know.
The swim team we don't charge, they use our facilities.
Well, let's take it into the ball fields, maybe you could do a study on that and see if that would be feasible and pass that charge on to the renters when they come into the rental ball field. That's a, that is a big problem, the bathrooms is, and, you know, I don't see any problem with us taking care of it, but I feel like basically put a field for it whenever they come in.
I'm not mistaken, is that how the school system does? When they, somebody uses earth or something?
Youth activities usually takes care of them, that's what we did there, custodians start in there on Saturdays.
But the stuff that's been.
Custodians don't come here because of youth.
The potter market, if they use the high school up there, as they have in the past, they had to pay for custard.
That's a contract to the school, you pay, you know, you have to pay for that.
I think that would solve the problem.
And you're talking about not just COVID, through COVID, you're talking about through. I think that would be an excellent, excellent idea, especially for the meet nights, but we would need at least one person manning both bathrooms during open swim. That would have to be, we'll have to have two additional employees every time the swim pool's open, so we'll have to have five in February.
Mr. Wood, can we go to the Tampa issue and ask the lady in there to handle that and just tell them what to do, that's non-benefited and you got to cover?
We, that's, we've utilized that, yes sir, on the cleaning, courthouse, for example, in some of our facilities, it's usually easier because they have that skill set and we're not having a 19-year-old or whatever else worried about the cleaning, that's usually a pool attendant or something. We do have those positions, being a pool attendant and lifeguard posted for application right now. Staff does recommend, just because of the complexity, I think you kind of heard it, that only the Marion facility open because of all the requirements and the staffing and it's never a money-making operation, it's not why we do it, it's provided entertainment, I guess, for the taxpayers. It would be a challenge, it is somewhat easier with your full-time staff to be close proximity, especially during the week, but.
And we.
For being remote is challenging.
Right, during the, during the week, we're always there, so we can man it as well, but I did tell Ashley I would make sure that I was around on weekends as well, and if I couldn't be there, then I'll have somebody.
Sue, what we, because I'm going to go straight to the checks, what do we need to go in that pool? Do you have people higher than talking about this, and is the pool ready yet? If you've got people that you can bring in there next week, is the pool ready yet?
No.
What do we like in the pool?
We just got finished cocking the lights on it, the cocking came in, cocking lights. As far as the water goes, we can have it ready in a week, week and a half, are, we do not have it stacked yet.
Okay, so let me ask you this question, I say tomorrow, get the water problem, get that scheduled, and then hopefully, hopefully, sure, there's, there's previous lifeguards that have worked in the county that might be interested in coming back and doing that because we need to get that pulled on. Don't organize the inspection, do you have?
Yes. And we've already sent our permit in and paid the money for their permit, but they have to inspect it before.
Has it been, is that on this pilot for you, this research and enforcement, or on the date that this is going to be inspected by the county?
What date that is?
Yeah.
Usually, once they put their permit in, when they're ready, they call us and we go out.
Oh, okay.
But the problem that we have are employees, and yes, I have contacted some in the past, they are coming back, we do have a problem with some that have, their certification has run out, they can't get recertified, no classes going on right now, they can, if they're willing to get a, an extension, I've talked to Colleen, they can get an extension on their certification, but they have to be willing to want to do that.
Is that CPR first aid?
And lifeguard training.
You don't do lifeguard training, do you? You do CPR first aid, right? Who does lifeguard training?
Colleen Gillen.
It's American Red Cross.
Yes.
How do you do unless she requires before she opens the class, is it individual or does she have to have a group?
Uh, no, she has to have a group, she usually likes to try to have four, at least four or five.
Well, I'm going to say this, it's June, it's not in groups. It's what a pretty good a group is to do, it's time we're doing something.
Ashley, if you got a suit, you heard the direction of the board.
We've had it posted about a week and a half as far as the.
We've had one apply, and I know, I've talked to one that definitely wants to come back, that others don't know if they want to go through extending their certification.
Does that seem to be the biggest issue you have is certification?
The certification for the lifeguards.
Suggestion, if Colleen would, if you could have a group kind of pulled together.
I will talk to her.
Coordinate a training next week.
Mr. Wood, tomorrow, you need to get together and everything, check it out, one, two, three, four, five, six, and get them by five tomorrow. Mind, I know you're on your people, and, you know, you've got a way to call that person, and let's move this thing forward. Is the few feet in the pool, the 50% is required by the guidelines?
As long as we limit to 50, then we do not have to.
So you can actually have 100 in there any other time, is that right?
Actually, we could have a lot more in everything.
In the pool? Because that was the question. Okay. Sue, thanks for being here, I know you traveled long and hard last night, so thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Okay, we covered item A and our old business, let's move to item B and our old business, board appointments, and we have, we got to take board trustees.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take the yes and the no.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, discussion, our favorite say aye, aye, your vote right there. Let's go to the public shooting range update, item C and our old business, Mr. Wood, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a quick update on the public shooting range project, again, this is the project that will build a public range out on county property of Ashworth Road. Bids were sent for an advertisement late last week for this project, which is great news, there will be a pre-bid meeting this Friday, I believe in this room, for any interested contractors, had one call today and we've sent to Wildlife for the bid packet. The bid opening is scheduled for July 1st, and the goal would be to award the bid, for you to award the bid the next meeting. Again, this is a 90% federal funding, but you agreed to, for the county to bid the project, and so the project costs will flow through our books, Ms. Bell has been in contact with the state on the reimbursement process, and so we're all in place there. The one thing that is being worked on still, the, the site itself, the road, the baffles and all different parts of that are being bid now, the building, the classroom building, office building, et cetera, will be, it is more complicated, more specific, that will be bid separately, so this project is out to bid now, it's mostly grading contractors, it's 95% grading, bridge construction, et cetera, with a few wooden shelters, the building is a little more along the lines of a GC. The building is a little more along the lines of a GC and so that was pulled out. Mr. Hamrick has been contacted, he is interested and willing to design that, looking at a basic office design there. So that would be done a little bit later in the process, but still where it would open when the range is done. Any questions on the project?
And the first, the amount that the county has put in is already set aside in next year's budget.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, let's go to item D under old business, this will be going with grant update, we have a swig.
Yes, sir. Quickly on this one, Golden Leaf announced, I believe in February, for the Northwest Prosperity Zone, which is our 12 county region, an initiative they are working on for the community-based grants-making initiative. This will provide $11 million total for the 12 county region. It is a competitive process, no one county is guaranteed any funding. There's a maximum of one to three grants per county and no more than 1.5 million awarded to any one county. So the odds are fairly good if you have a competitive project. What is unusual, this building was built mostly with Golden Leaf funds, opened in That was a cooperative, community-based project to select this building for that funding. There was a contact, a liaison, a Golden Leaf employee that worked in each community and specifically here with, with us on that process. They're, they're not doing that this time, they're essentially leaving it up to the communities to form their own process, get together, decide what projects they want to work on as a community. And they, they have designated, and I promise this was not consulted or asked, but they designated the county managers as a point of contact. The way it's written is the county managers will select the projects and I think I can speak for the other 11 that we don't select much and maybe our ties, that we're in the morning perhaps. So I have no, I have full disclosure with everyone prior to this and tonight, I have no preconceived notions that I will be the one selecting this project, projects on my own or at all. It will be based on a process and input and I will be the one hitting the send button on the email if there's any confusion. I've sent a suggested process and I haven't entirely heard back on, yes, that sounds great or no, that's terrible, just to kind of help formulate. There are people in the community that have project ideas outside of the county organization that have been to the orientation meeting, they've been in contact with some of the coaches involved with it and they're well on their way. But just to get additional word out via press releases, Facebook, et cetera, you see a rough outline of a process, I would suggest we, we send out a press release in Facebook and everything else to everyone, just to make sure that eligible applicants are aware of the process. Give them a few weeks to email and there may be already people and we wouldn't ask them to do things they've already done again, but anyone that we've not heard from before, get the application, information or letter of interest, get in touch with the grant coach, make sure it's an eligible project. I did suggest, I talked to the chairman about this, a review committee would perhaps made up of county, city, town, maybe a few others, representatives from each, get together and talk about the different projects and then at the end of it, have fully formed projects to submit to Rural Center of Golden Leaf. That way there's cooperation, collaboration amongst the whole community and it's not necessarily to a half-baked idea that makes sense. We do have some projects that have, again, intercalating from folks that have been very proactive and going all the way back to February to the kickoff meeting in Lenore. There's a school project for elementary schools to have STEM labs. Mr. Garrett is, I think, asking for board endorsement of that. Have a meeting set up later this week with Heather Edwards and the Rural Center to talk about the food hub, to try to find a way, if there isn't, if it's not clear, but to see if that's a good application for the project. MTA and the county have an interest in additional site development here on this property. So I'm sure there's others that, that have been made aware, people that...
We spoke at our utility meeting the other day and the mayor liked this idea and our board, the city council, the old port alderman, submit three projects, we talked about the other day, three projects each and then with whatever else comes in. And then that committee would be, was rough, if we start getting rough in, two commissioners, two council members, two aldermen, since it's about the prosperity zone, Steve Bush and then Chuck Crammett, you got MTA and you got CHAM. When we get that far down and trying to get your top three. And I commented, Ashley, I said, it doesn't matter to me who gets, what project gets it, because I'll let it get, I'll, I'll let y'all three of ours funded, because it's gonna be here and we down track anyway. It's gonna benefit our people anyway. So our board, our board looks forward to more conversation moving forward.
We'll keep it on the agenda until October.
Okay, let's go to item A under new business, this will be administrative, item, just sweep and say it.
Just a few here tonight. The first item, and I'll do them separately, again, if that's okay. You have the non-collectible EMS accounts, you have that list from finance, we would ask if you waived those.
Chairman, I may be late, but...
Second. Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye, you vote right side.
Thank you. You do have four project budget ordinances, courthouse renovation addition amendment four, driveway project amendment four, EMS projects, which is new, and the COVID relief fund, which is new. These are our budget ordinances, ask you to approve those.
We should approve the tournament EMS project COVID.
Second. Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side.
And then you have GF 77 through GF 88 for your budget amendments and...
We approve the budget amendment, as presented.
Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side.
That's all we have.
Okay, let's go to item B, Leland Road and Gold Rush 5K, Mr. Wood, please say it.
Thank you. Last year you approved a road closure request for the Ruhrton Club. This is a 5K that is planned to be held on August 15th. I believe entirely in Polisfaut Road. It is a request to be an intermittent closure to where there would be, as racers come and go, it would be, you know, somewhat regulated, but we've got the detail there from Mr. Morgan, I believe you sent that in, but if you needed additional information, we could get it. You've got the time from 7:45 to 9:30, the length there on Polisfaut Road and there would be markings on the highway, et cetera.
Please refer to the resolution, second.
Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side. Okay, let's go to the review officer, resolution, Mr. Wood, please say it.
Yes, sir. You're allowed to empower staff to review map changes. In this instance, we're talking about city staff. We do currently do that, where city staff review map changes, flats, et cetera, before they're recorded at the deeds office. And Ms. Alton, Lauren Alton would be added to the approved list to review map changes inside the city limits only.
That was question, what should approve the, second? Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side. Okay, let's go to the item D, the universal property road discussion, Mr. Wood, please say it.
Yes, sir. This is related to the, the NC DOT slash Appalachian Regional Commission project that will build access roads on the undeveloped land off of College Drive here. There's a very small portion of the road closest to the pond, we've temporarily called Pond Road, but that will not be the final name. But on your map there on page 59, there's a yellow section of right of way that we would ask that you allow to be dedicated to DOT right of way.
We did kick right away to this part.
Second. Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side. Okay, let's go to tax matters, item E.
The only item, you do have some vehicle refunds, that was it this morning.
We approve the tax rate.
Second.
Discussion, all favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side. Okay, let's go down to assistant committee, do we have anybody here tonight who wishes to speak? If so, come forward and state your name and we'll be glad to listen to you. Okay, there being none, let's move to the next item. On the agenda, this is commissioners, staff reports, communications, do we have anybody with anything that the board needs to know from staff or commissioners?
I'll just, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, do a reminder, your budget public hearing is next Monday, that was advertised in the McDowell News. You will have other items of interest on that agenda, including the recreation contract we talked about earlier. I will note also that your next regular meeting in July will be the 13th, but before that, county offices will be closed on July 3rd for independent state.
Okay. Great. Please, any need ahead?
I'm with you.
Okay. All favors say aye? Aye. You vote right side. Meeting is adjourned.